I'm going to open up the Health and Sanitation Committee. We have one item on the agenda, it's an ordinance, ordering the raising and demolition and removal of certain residential structure within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, located at 1205 Crutcher Street, to declare an emergency and for other purposes, and I'll turn this over to Ernest, Kate, City Attorney.
Thank you. This, I'm going to let Tom speak to this in a minute, but we, this is a property that we've been dealing with for quite some time. The police have had, had to deal with this property for quite some time, it's red-tagged, but there continues to be people squatting in the house, arrests made out of the house. We've leaned, we've leaned this property, I can't tell how many times, we've leaned this property, it's been several, and we've also cited the owner into court, she owes quite a bit of money for cleanup liens on this property, we've provided notice both to the owner and to the lien holder, I don't know if anyone's here on behalf of either one of those, but the proof of the, the receipt of this hearing is in your packet, and then I'll turn it over to Tom.
And yes, counsel, again, we have been dealing with this for several years, most recently, several years starting in 2015 with the water leak, it was one of their primary issues, which to this day, I've never been called back or asked to come back to see if it was fixed. I was over there midway through 2020, where the police had called me over there for this incident, went over there and took several pictures, given them a chance to clean it up, never cleaned it up, and then I turned it into condemnation in May, and then after that 30 days, they had signed for it, and I sent it over to Ernest so he could proceed with condemnation on it. Mr. Flores has three current pictures as of today, and I put those in color that he's passing around, just so you can see what it looks like as of today. They've done absolutely nothing to attempt to try to fix anything, so. I mean, I don't know that there's one window in that house that's not busted out.
Is anyone living in it?
They're not supposed to be, I've had it red-tagged for months, but maybe, week and a half, two weeks ago, I went over there and this daughter and son-in-law and their son was living there, so they've got multi-generational people that stay there, but it's supposed to be empty. In fact, they, I was over there within the last two or three months because they have a sewer break, so I had to get the water pulled because I didn't want to fix that, so.
I just, I saw the mo, those pictures taken today, I saw the motorcycle, is it not running?
It's, it's been there, yeah, it's been there forever, I don't think it runs, you know, so. But like Ernest said, you know, Ron's people have been over there to clean it, you know, monthly almost, to do, to do anything. One of the residents Ernest had alluded to, I was in court with last week for that because he, you know, keeps getting violation after violation along with his mother-in-law, so.
So when is the last communication you've had with the owner?
Um, it's been this calendar year, it's been probably three or four months ago, she's now residing with her sister in Sonora, so she's not even living there, I think she's just kind of let it go to her kids and grandkids and let them run amok with all their friends. I, it is a sad thing because she's owned it since 1978, but she at some point has gotten lean against it, and I, I don't think she quite understands it, when it does disappear, she thinks she'll have the lot to sell, but that will go to replenish the bank as much as they can, so she's really going to lose on it, you know. But, I said, we, this house even goes back further than that. Years ago, CDBG helped this lady by putting a roof on it and doing several things for her, and, you know, the 10-year living span has long since expired, but because of the conditions it's in now, CDBG won't even help them.
And CDBG won't get any, won't collect, the 10, the 10 years is past, so CDBG won't get?
They won't lose any money because they've already, they've already lived the 10 years there, so they've already fulfilled that obligation.
But in the settling of all this, there will be nothing coming back to CDBG?
I do not believe so, yes.
Do we already have a lien against it?
Several liens.
We have several.
We have several liens?
We've, we've, it actually got to the point with, with the owner that she got to where she owed so much in restitution to the court, because that's how we were collecting it, that she just said.
And our liens, did they take priority over the?
They're collected as tax, tax, back taxes.
You know the amount of that?
I don't, off the top of my head, we actually brought another one back to counsel last week for a lien, and I talked to Ron this morning, and he said it actually needs to be cleaned up again, like he's mentioned, it's, these people who aren't supposed to be there keep bringing junk, and they keep having to clean it up.
Yeah, last week's lien was about $1,000, I believe, Ernest, and Ron had asked me Friday about it because they knew that it needs to be cleaned again, and since they knew this was coming to council, what they should do, and, I mean, it's at least probably four more weeks to, but, I mean, five weeks before I can do anything, so they probably will have to abate it again, you know.
We're, we're to the point now where it just, in my opinion, it just needs to be raised to keep people out of the residence.
I'll move the ordinance to council with recommendation for approval.
Any other questions or?
Is there anybody here in the audience?
Comments? No. Okay, all those in favor of moving this to council with a recommendation of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Thank you, counsel.
And I will close Health and Sanitation and move to Mr. Overton.
We'll open up the ordinance committee meeting, we have two ordinance that come before the committee, the first one is an ordinance amending Chapter 78, Article 2, declaring an emergency for other purposes, and this concerning prohibiting use of tobacco products in our parks, and City Attorney will explain it to us.
Thank you, yes, this also would include smokeless tobacco, meaning chewing tobacco, snuff, it also includes electronic cigarettes, vaping devices, or other heated devices in our city parks, would involve signs being erected that would let people know that it's prohibited. This is in line somewhat with what Rogers and Fayetteville have already done, I think, I think, I don't think Rogers prohibits smokeless, meaning chewing, when I say smokeless, I mean chewing tobacco, dipping, but this is more in line with what Fayetteville has in their parks.
This would also, if we include, Chad, you might want to come up, if we include a smokeless tobacco, then it also helps with some grant opportunities, things like that.
Right, Deb with the community clinic is going to provide us with grants to, to make signs so we can put them up over all of our parks, and I don't, you know, I'm not sure how many signs we'll need, but probably quite a few, but we definitely need it because we have no ordinance for any kind of tobacco in the parks other than the rec center, you know, you can't smoke there, and we, in like dugouts, you know, you have the adults that are playing, sometimes they're there smoking, but they, they're told to leave, or, or we kick them out of the ballpark if they're smoking, so. Other than that, you know, I, I don't see much this daily activity of smoking, but when you get into, in the evenings and stuff when I'm not around, then that's probably what's happening.
One point that came up that I hadn't thought about, you brought it up at our meeting, and feel free to add to this if you, if you need to, but, but the, the vaping portion of this.
Yeah.
I had never considered, because I don't know much about vaping.
I don't either.
But I guess as, as medical marijuana, or the availability of marijuana becomes more.
Legal.
It becomes more available.
Yeah.
That's, that could be a, a method that could be used to, and we, I know we don't want that in our parks either, so.
There are already, uh, Heather's been making signatures and curations on marijuana on the ballot, so this would kind of get possibly candidates that all.
I think we, we probably all know that's just, probably just a matter of time, whether it, that's what we've seen in other parts of the country, yeah.
Got a question on this, is there any reason why this wasn't passed before?
I don't think it's ever been brought.
I don't know how long ago this particular ordinance has been in place, so I don't know.
It hadn't come before the ordinance committee in 20 years.
Yeah, I was just saying if there's a reason.
Yeah. Actually, community clinic came and, and talked about the opportunity, you know, really like to see Springdale do this, and I've gotten calls before from people in our parks who, you know, wished we would do this, they had, they were around someone smoking or, or something, and they didn't, didn't really have anything, really didn't have a tool to say, well, no, you're not supposed to do that here because it's not in our, it's not been spelled out in our ordinance.
And this, this would, this would also apply to stands at ball fields, I think that's probably where the issues come up more than anything.
And I, yeah, I know, I know we don't want, as nice as our fields are, we don't want chewing tobacco and all that goes with that out there.
No.
And this, this may open up a can of worms that I don't mean to open up, but when it comes to the signage, is there any way we can consider or implement signs that are universally accepted as anti-smoking, or no smoking as opposed to, you know, the language aspect, so we don't have to make multiple signs?
Yeah, I think one of the grants that we would be seeking would, talk to us a little about that.
When we get your approval for any signage, and actually, if we can either pay the sign department to make them, or if we can have them?
But you have the accept, the appropriate language that, that we would, that we would want to put on.
Or, or, yeah.
And we could get this in different languages?
We actually could, and we, we have to, obviously, let it all look at it and approve the signage before obviously having any signs made.
What's committee's pleasure?
Well, I have a quick question, so I know that the library right there next to Murphy Park has signage at their front door, but it's just for so many feet away from the door, would that be included in this, or is everybody from the park just going to go over and way over to the parking lot of the library?
Of course, we have a separate provision in our library ordinance that talks about smoking is limited to designated areas only.
Okay.
Does it include the parking at the parks?
I can't remember if I put the language.
This might actually take care of part of their area, if we included Murphy Park. Being a city property, I'm just curious on that.
I think it's in the mist, ladies.
They might, we might need to talk to them about changing, making some changes to their signage, possibly if this, if this passes.
So what, what is, since this would be in the ordinance, what's the, what's the downside? What's the penalty?
Penalty is just the general penalty of Section 1-9, which is a, of course, we don't want to fine anyone, we want compliance, but should someone choose to ignore a warning or whatever, then it's punishable by up to a $500 fine.
I think the biggest thing, Brian, is it'll just give us something to point to when we ask somebody to put it out, or to stop doing that. It'll have some, some teeth.
I, I feel like the, you know, most smokers know that this is probably their deal, but, but the chewing tobacco, I feel like we're, we'll probably get more kickback on because it's something that's not really affecting, you know, you can't breathe it in, I, I've never seen someone limit chewing tobacco in a park, I've, I've never noticed that, I mean, I understand.
I think Fayetteville does, but, but I, and, and it would be for, for the sign grant, that would have to be included in this, all smokeless tobacco. I think from our standpoint, there may be others, but the only argument I think of is, is having to.
Clean up.
Clean it up, yeah.
The, the ordinance as far as the library, smoking at the library, it says prohibited within a distance of 25 feet outside the front door of the library, and there's signs that are supposed to be posted that say you can't smoke beyond a certain point or within a certain point of the, of the front doors, but that's the only thing we have now.
I mean, should the, should the verbiage say on, on city property, or is that limiting employees, or, I mean?
Well, this just pertains, the one before you just pertains to, to parks and park facilities, trails, also includes trails.
Some of these do have, but it doesn't include all, city parks would include all vehicles in there?
There's already state law that prohibits smoking in a municipal vehicle, there's a state law.
I'll move the ordinance to council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Any further comments or discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, this will be forwarded to council for the recommendation for approval. The next ordinance we have come before us is a, an ordinance amending Section 46-51 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Springdale, declaring an emergency and for other purposes, and this is requiring sprinkling of duplexes and townhouses, and they said with some exceptions, and you want to explain that to us, Ernest?
I'm going to defer to the fire marshal.
Yes, sir, unfortunately Chief Irwin couldn't be here this evening, so what I'm going to do is give a little bit of historical context, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Could you answer one question first, what does it mean by, what, what are exceptions to this one?
The exceptions are for existing buildings, so any additions or alterations made to an existing townho, townhouse, and the same for two-family residential that are not already provided an automatic residential sprinkler system, so in other words, this is for new construction only, it accepts existing buildings that aren't sprinkled.
So even, even remodels wouldn't, they wouldn't trigger this?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, that was, thank.
So just briefly, what we're trying to amend is our adoption of Arkansas Fire Prevention Code Volume 3, which is based on the International Residential Code, so International Residential Code is the basis for design and construction standards for one and two-family dwellings and townhouses not exceeding three stories above grade. The Residential Code contained sprinkler requirements as an optional appendix beginning in 2006, and 2009, they removed it from the appendix and put it in the general wording, so in the International Code as written, the International Residential Codes, the sprinkler requirements are not an option, they're a requirement.
And did you say that was for single family too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, so they leave local jurisdictions to make amendments as to how they adopt, adopt it as written. So I'll reference just a few locations to give you some historical data, because that's where data is collected to make the reports that I use for research, those are California and Maryland, because they were the first two states to adopt the Residential Code as written with no amendments, so since 2010, California and Maryland, all residential construction is sprinkled. Scottsdale, Arizona required home sprinklers and new construction since 1985. Just in general, as an industry, the United States Fire Service has not been doing enough to solve the residential fire problem, nor addressing the most effective way to reduce not only civilian, but also firefighter injuries and deaths. In the first 10 years of data analyzed by a group on behalf of Scottsdale, Arizona, in the first 10 years, there was no civilian deaths in a sprinkled building, at the same time period, there was 13 deaths in non-sprinkled residential buildings. Property savings were also significant, the average fire loss per sprinkled building, $2,166, average fire loss non-sprinkled building was $45,019. Also, Rogers, Arkansas adopted an ordinance requiring sprinklers and duplexes and townhouses July 2021. So my part in this is kind of research assistant and also participated in the process with Rogers Fire Chief Mike Jenkins and our Fire Chief Mike Irwin, Rogers Fire Marshal BJ Hyde, we met with the Home Builders Association after our research and discussed this proposal with them before bringing it forward, so we went to one of their regular meetings and were able to have a discussion, answer some questions before we moved it forward, so we're, we're not trying to do anything underhanded or, or to slight anybody.
What was the result of those discussions, like?
Well, the, the result was that they offered a, an official position, they're, officially, the only position they took was that they support sprinkler systems in new multifamily dwellings with three attached units or more, they did not take a position for or against any of our other recommendations, and our association supports affordable protections that provide human safety and personal property.
So is this a problem that we're seeing here?
What's that?
Is this a, a problem that we're seeing here with the statistics and things like that, are they also?
It is a problem, and.
Can you give me some, some numbers on that?
Uh, we don't have a, part of the problem with specific numbers, yeah, is that the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code accepts in most cases one and two-family dwellings, so for duplexes, we don't have a lot of good data because one and two-family dwellings are lumped together in statistical analysis, and so.
What, what is a townhouse?
Yeah, what's a townhouse, I'm sorry.
Two-story.
A townhouse is, yeah, typically two-story, narrow, tall, multiple units stuck together.
Hmm.
They can be, but a townhouse is, has some specific design requirements, and it, it has its own definition, if they give it fire separation, it's treated like one family, but it has a definition of a townhouse.
Well, I, I understand townhouses if they're right next to each other, I see that.
Townhouses have to have shared walls, yep.
They, they do have to have shared walls, okay, so like this new subdivision that Brian Moore's putting in west, that's not a townhouse?
Zero law lines are not a townhouse?
No.
Correct.
Right, it's, it's basically, it, it would be multi-family, either.
They are multi-family structure, have you seen the ones on Oriole?
Yes.
South at 412, those are townhouses, so they're, they're basically apartments that are two stories tall.
Shared walls is the main definition.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
Does this apply to PUDs in the future with, with duplexes and townhouses?
It would as, as we're proposing the amendment, yes.
Does this have an economic impact on the renters?
Well, I, I can't answer that because I don't know how, you know, the.
It probably would, it would probably trickle, trickle down.
I can tell you.
Developers would take the money, and then they would, and then increase the rent to cover that.
Absolutely.
Right.
And we can talk about cost, because what we're proposing would only require an NFPA 13D system, which is different than what you see in buildings like this, and hotels and motels, and even apartment buildings, which are 13R or 13 systems, commercial and large residentials are 13R, 13D is a part of the domestic water supply, so it doesn't require additional pipe, underground piping that's got its own tap to the domestic supply with a demarcation valve and a riser inside and all that stuff, it doesn't have to have a fire alarm system dedicated to it like you would in another one, it's simply piping to sprinkler heads that are part of the plumbing system of the house.
And they have those sprinkler in each room?
Yes, but there are in 13D, there are like small room exceptions, so certain rooms under 400 square feet.
Like a utility room might not require it.
Correct.
What's the average, average cost of one of these?
Uh, the average cost nationally is, equates to $1.35 per square foot, what they've found is that in places who have sprinkler requirements, longstanding sprinkler requirements especially, Maryland and California together, the average cost is $1.16 per square foot, Scottsdale, who's had it since 1985, the average cost is $1.06 per square foot, what that indicates is when there's requirements, the market adjusts and, and allows for competition prices to lower the, the supply.
So if it's dollar per square foot, it's a 1,200 square foot duplex, it's $1,200?
Correct.
I just want to make sure that we're not creating a solution to a nonexistent problem for Springdale.
Well, our problems would be the same as everybody else's, I mean.
They are, Springdale is a, I mean, we're a microcosm of the national statistics, there's no way around it, look at, if I can think of a, a good example, 2021 South Thompson, we had a fire in, in one unit there, the fire was contained to that one unit, the whole building's going to have to be torn down, all the people on either side, they had no stake in it other than they were in the same building, that, that's how apartment buildings work, one fire in an apartment building that's uncontained for a period of time, the whole apartment building needs to be razed, we went through that down off of Twin City, you know, just a couple of years ago.
Is that the glass place you were talking about?
What's that?
The glass place on Thompson, is that the one?
Next to the glass base, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
I thought it was the last.
And so that, how many times does that, has that happened, let's say in the last 10 years?
Uh, in multifamily, I would say probably dozens, I mean, we average 90 fires a year, and so if we look at our, you know, just look at the numbers for Springdale, you're talking about, like I said, 65 of those will be in, in dwellings, but we lump one and two-family together, so you get a, that's just the way our statistical program is set up right now, and then multifamily, we had about 30 last year, so 30 fires in multifamily last year. We understand people's desire and right to protect their own property by making good decisions and making good choices and being safe, the problem is when you have shared wall neighbors, you, you can't be responsible for what they choose to do, and so this is a level of protection for everybody, that even if your neighbor chooses to make a bad decision or not be safe, you can still be protected.
And, and why wasn't that brought, so when did this originally come about nationally? But it wasn't brought forward to us until Rogers, but we knew the statistical analysis of it, right?
That's true.
Why now?
Well, if you, if any of you've known Chief Irwin, he's been advocating for sprinklers in every residential dwelling since he came here 10 years ago, and so I, I don't know the answer specifically to why he chose today, but.
I, I can maybe shed a little light on that, just based on what, when he brought it to me, and I wish he could have been here, but, but when he brought it to me, you know, as you said, we've talked about sprinklers for, for years, even in single-family, but when he brought it to me, he, he told me of the process that you all had gone through with the Home Builders Association, the process Rogers was going through, and that he believed this might be a time that we're ready because we can, we, it looks like we've, we've satisfied the major concerns of the Home Builders Association.
That's true.
So that's why, I think that's why he's bringing it forward now.
So the Home Builders Association, it, their recommendation does or does not meet what's on our ordinance?
All they offered was a voice of support for part of what our deal is, but they off, but they offered no.
Everything but the duplexes, is that correct?
Correct, but they offered no opposition to the duplexes, they just.
Can we amend or change that, where it's not include anything but what the, what their recommendation is?
Well, and in line with the amendment part.
Yeah, and realize they don't have a recommendation, they just offered support or opposition to what we proposed, they offered no opposition, support only for, for part of it.
Did they say why they weren't offering support for the?
They did not.
There's, there's an emergency clause in this proposed ordinance, is there a, I mean, that's 30 days, correct, 30 days notice to the builder to implement this?
Well, if it passes, you need to make a separate determination about the emergency clause, and there was, there's an emergency clause.
That's a decision of the council time after it was passed, if it was passed.
Right, and so with no emergency clause.
60 days.
And that's just much more notice to.
I think.
To the developer.
I mean, we've got, we've got a lot of projects, we've already approved, that these weren't included in their design, correct?
these weren't included in their design, correct? And our intention is not to change anything that's been through the development process.
Will go on like it was.
Yeah.
Okay.
So when we say anything's been approved, that's their large-scale, not their zone.
Probably is it tied to their building permit?
Building permit, so I'd be the large-scale.
The large-scale, yeah.
Well, there's some, there's things that we've approved that haven't been permitted yet. You see what I'm saying? I mean, there's, so we need to make sure that we, if we do approve something, we hold that good for those guys that have, you know, not been anticipating this.
Yeah, we need to be sure of what we're, when the clock starts.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's the point I'm trying to make with the emergency clause of, one, I don't think it's necessary, and obviously we can change that, but also setting a time of when this begins and who it applies to.
At what stage in the development process does this begin? Or Tom, do you, Mike?
This will begin when?
How that would work?
With duplexes, that would be probably during the tech plat process, wouldn't it, during the?
Yeah, when Ed makes his comments.
And I would think to your point, Mr. Chairman, it'd be best to take it to projects that have not gone through large scale at this point. As you said, these people have started, they've got a plan in place, and most of them are single-family residential subdivisions we're looking at that would be affected potentially by this. But we do have a few that have some multifamily duplexes bigger. So I really think if it didn't impede too much on the plan of the fire department, we could make that with new projects coming in. That would give everybody a head start on where to go with it.
Long as everybody understands the ballgame when they come in.
Right, sir.
Well, right now, is it five, what's the smallest project that's sprinkled currently? That's, you have to sprinkle. Fiveplexes?
No, we have single-family residences that are sprinkled currently.
But we don't require that.
In some cases we do, and one of the things that you can also look at from a developer's standpoint, when you sprinkle developments as a whole, you can have, sometimes you can see savings in other, in other fire protection areas like not requiring a second access because the development is sprinkled, not requiring as many fire hydrants because all the development is sprinkled. So there are offsets to the added cost of sprinkler.
Currently, do fiveplexes have to be sprinkled?
Yes.
Okay, so right now, fourplexes and blow don't have to be?
Uh, no. Townhouses are different. Anything over a duplex that's not a townhouse has to be sprinkled now.
There's actually single-family residences, if there's more than so many lots and there's only
Thirty.
More than thirty lots and there's only one access, they have to be sprinkled.
Right, we have that now.
What about our capacity issues for water? Will this affect our capacity?
I don't think
It doesn't affect capacity because the only time they're used is when there's actually a fire. The one thing that it will change is the meter size requirement by Springdale Water. Instead of five-eighths, they'll typically have to have a one-inch meter. But other than that, they're, like I said, they're just like a toilet or a sink. Unless there's a fire, there's no consumption demand on the system period. And it actually usually results in a net water savings if there's a fire because we use less water when there's sprinklers that keep the fire small before we get there.
Is there a way to look at the, like a cost comparison of this is what you'll save when you have this installed and this is what this will cost?
Not an accurate one because there's a lot of variables. So there's more than one dwelling fire sprinkler system design and install team. So what they charge is going to potentially affect each project differently. There is different insurers will do discounts differently, so there's no way to say you'll save X amount.
What will set off a residential fire sprinkler is heat, is it smoke, is it a combination, is it with the fire alarms in the house?
The sprinkler system and the alarms are completely separate. The smoke detectors, detectors or smoke alarms only sense smoke. The sprinklers will only activate with heat. Each sprinkler is independent, so if you set off one head, that does not mean that they all discharge water. Only when one head reaches its temperature and they'll be set anywhere from one hundred and thirty-five to one hundred and sixty-five degrees typically. As the temperature, when it reaches that temperature, that head opens and discharges water. And you're roughly twelve gallons per minute. So the actual water discharge before we get there is relatively low considering our fire hose will flow one hundred and fifty to one hundred and seventy-five gallons per minute when we walk in the door.
I guess there's additional insulation that probably has to go on top of that too because it's in the attic.
It depends on how it's designed, but yes, if it's in an unconditioned space, the design team will provide insulating instructions to keep the sprinkler piping in the conditioned space.
The reason I'm asking all these questions is because the cost keeps building, you know, you go from
All those are included in the cost.
That's included in the cost?
Yes.
Added insulation, added?
It's not added insulation, it's just a different way of insulating, so the insulation goes over the pipe.
So the sensor's in the actual head of the house?
That sensor is in the head individually, yes.
And keep in mind too, I think there may be a lot of home shoppers who would see this as something they want.
Yeah, most people do. The research that's done on stakeholder opinions, basically, surveys, you know, ninety percent of people are in favor of their sprinkler system and you know, a fair percentage of the leftover have no opinion because they don't know about it. They just bought the house with it. They don't have the same testing requirements as say, a system here, so there's nothing intrusive about it. The sprinklers in Scottsdale were checked, surveyed twenty years after installation and they found that all of the ones that were not tampered with by homeowners, in other words, shut off, were still functional. And the systems we're proposing do not have a shut off. They would just be part of the domestic supply.
Let me just, and I'm going back now to some early conversations I had with Chief Irwin back years ago when we were talking mainly about the single family, as he was expressing his hope that someday we would require of all single-family dwellings. And he said that the purpose of the sprinklers is not, is not to put out a fire. It's to slow, slow the spread down and allow people to get out safely, so it's more of a life safety than it is
Fire suppression.
Fire suppression.
That's a hundred percent.
It slows the spread while our crews are getting there, then less damage has been done. And it lengthens the time that people have to get out safely.
That's correct.
Of the thirty fires that we had, how many of those resulted in death where they couldn't
Last year, zero.
Of the building?
Last year, zero deaths, but we had for sure one apartment fire with a severe injury.
And I think, I mean, our risk in Springdale is going to be the same risk as anywhere else.
That's true.
I mean, a house is a house, a fire is a fire. It can happen anywhere and I'm not sure a historical look at what we've had here is necessarily is necessarily relevant because we've got the same, we've got the same risks anybody does. Now, we try and, that's part of your job, is trying to, that's why we have inspections, that's why we have, it's trying to mitigate those risks and we've made big improvements there over the years.
Yep, and that's, that's part of why we're here is our charge is to continue to make improvements and this is a way we can make an improvement.
Do we know cost savings on insurance? Do they give an average cost savings for the owner?
They did not. Like I said, that's so dependent, insurance carrier to carrier, sometimes agent to agent, that it's not really practical to provide like a savings. Chief Irwin has told me what his was and
He lives in a Springfield home.
Yes, and his is fairly significant, like between ten and twenty percent. I don't know his exact number is what he conveyed to me.
I'm just, that'd be a good thing to know because I'm sure we're going to have some calls on developers after they hear about this, but you know, that'd be a good statistic to know to be able to say, well, you might make that back in this amount of time after, you know, you developed this. So that'd be a good thing to know.
Yeah, developers will see cost savings in other ways and then your homeowners or renters will see the return on their insurance savings.
Well, the owner pays the insurance, not the renter. Typically, they pay a renter's insurance.
Yes.
They're paying the insurance.
Right, they're paying it, but it's going to end up in high increase, you know, that's
That's true.
So.
So I have two quick questions. So the developer, are there plumbers going to be able to install this or are we going to have to use somebody like American Fire Dunk?
Plumbers are able to install it. There's a training course that they take from whichever manufacturer they use. The manufacturer provides the system design and the training at no cost, and then the plumber can do the install.
And then is the fire department or somebody else going to have to periodically inspect the units in all these residents?
Nope.
Like you do businesses?
Nope.
Ernest?
Inspections or? There are no required inspections. The NFPA thirteen D because it's a function of the plumbing system. It's not a fire protection system, which is why it's in the residential code, not in the fire code. The owner of the property will be given a recommended maintenance schedule, but there's nothing to do unless the heads have a shelf life. Then they'll be recommended when they can, when they should have the heads replaced and that's at the owner's discretion. It's not something that the fire department will follow up on.
I move forward the ordinance council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, it'll be, and I was an aye, so that's six one, so we'll pass this forward to the council for a recommendation for approval. It'll be on our next council meeting. Is there anything else come forward, the ordinance committee? If not, we stand adjourned.